Aloha, everyone. Welcome to our joint committee with the Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism and our good friends from the Committee on Agriculture and Environment. We're on our 3 o'clock agenda where many of us are here in room 224. And we have one item on this particular agenda. And oh, sorry, I have to do some housekeeping announcements. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube for your sheer enjoyment 24 hours a day. You'll find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video pages of the Legislature's website. And in the unlikely event we hit some technical turbulence and this hearing takes a nosedive, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3 o'clock on Wednesday, February 17th. If that does occur, a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. And for those who are participating remotely, I wanted to let you know all testifiers' audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. So now that we all know the rules of engagement, we are going to go to Senate Bill 167 relating to the state plan. First in our testifiers' list is Danielle Bass from the Office of Planning.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. My name is Danielle Bass, State Sustainability Coordinator, representing the Office of Planning here today. Mahalo for hearing this measure and Happy Lunar New Year to all of you. The Office of Planning wants to stand on our testimony in strong support of this measure and we find it complementary to the newly established statewide sustainability goal or programs as well as the objectives and responsibilities of the state's greenhouse gas sequestration task force, which is administratively attached to the Office of Planning. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you so much. Mahalo.
Thank you, Danielle. Gonghi fahchoi to you. David Smith from DLNR.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. David Smith, I'm the Administrator with the Division of Forestry and Wildlife and we'll stand on our written testimony. We're all in on this, strong support.
Thank you, David. Heather McMillan from DLNR as well.
Aloha, Heather McMillan, urban and community forester with DLNR. I am secondary in testimony. As Dave just expressed, we stand on our testimony in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. We have supportive testimony from the Department of Health, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Sherri Pollak, Fern Anuini Holland, Ruda Jordans, Ted Bohm, and Melody Oduho. All of those individuals have submitted testimony in support. Members, do you have any questions for the three people we have online? No? Great bill. Okay, that's it for me and I'm going to switch over to my pal Senator Gabbard. Do you have to gavel out? And then I will gavel in for you if you don't mind, Senator Gabbard.
Actually, you have to play by the rules, Chair. You had to wait till 3:05, otherwise we might get in trouble.
Okay, entertainment time.
Don't say please.
Okay. But you're the most talented person in the room.
We can brainstorm on some green infrastructure ideas.
A one-eyed man is a king.
Okay, we're all good.
Okay, I'm going to gavel in if you don't mind.
Okay.
Are you?
All right. Are we in, Matt? Are we good?
Five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, calling to order the Joint AEN EET 305 Agenda. It's Friday, February 12th. Let's see, we have three measures. If for some reason, I won't go through all the housekeeping announcements, I will mention that if for some reason we don't get to outstanding business, AEN will reconvene at 1:44 PM on February 17th during our regular AEN video conference time slot. And so we'll start off with SB 335 relating to agriculture. Requires the Department of Ag and Agribusiness Development Corporation to annually lease at least 50% of land leased or up for lease renewal to operations whose primary business is local food production beginning July 1st, 2022. And it requires the Department of Ag and the Agribusiness Development Corporation to submit reports to the Legislature on leasing activities. Okay, first up, we have Jimmy Nakatani from ADC.
Can you hear me, Senator?
Yes, we can't see you, though.
I don't know what happened. I've been having problems all day over here.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Senator, and members of the committee. My name is Jimmy Nakatani and I appreciate the intent of the Senate Bill 335. Just some comments, you know, I think for us is that leasing for, you know, for food crops is a priority for our leases and, you know, that's a requirement. I mean, we always look at, you know, a priority for our leases as food priority. Farmers, you know, needs to be, you know, all farming business is a business, so it needs to be economically viable. And the 50%, I'm just concerned that maybe down the future, you know, in the future, like hemp is taking, you know, you know, gaining traction and if hemp becomes an industry, I don't know how that clogs that, but it's not a problem for Oahu. I mean, you know, most of our leases are in food crop production. And I just think that, you know, other crops like nursery products, although we don't have any on our land, might be affected statewide. And I'm not sure that if we get more land or anything like that, that, you know, nursery products would be something for us. And the last comment is that, you know, I know everybody wants sustainable agriculture here, feed the local people, and that's our goal. I just think that, you know, at some point in time, we need to balance that with exports because exports brings in money and funds like that to support our agriculture industry. And export will certainly let our agriculture grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next, Phyllis Shima Bakuroro Geiser from Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Morris Sata, on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department will stand on its testimony opposing the bill and for the reasons stated therein, primarily that mandating food, 50% food production on all of its lands may have contrary impacts to some of our non-food producing, producing farmers. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Beth Tokioke with the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. We have submitted testimony in opposition, but we've also suggested an amendment that would address our concerns. So very briefly, our concern is related to the West Kauai Energy Project, which is a solar pumped storage hydro project that we are, have been in development for a number of years and it will be the first of its kind in the world. When it's completed, it'll meet up to 25% of our energy needs and it'll bring KIUC to more than 80% renewable. So it's a very, very important project for us. It involves not just the construction of the renewable facilities, but also significant improvements to lands owned by three different state agencies. We'll be rehabilitating and upgrading three reservoirs and the associated ditch systems and delivering irrigation water to both Department of Hawaiian Homelands and ADC once the project is complete. We'll also be restoring and maintaining the required stream flows in the Waimea River and its tributaries. So a critical component of this project is a solar plus battery facility that would provide the energy that would pump the water from the Manaw Reservoir at the bottom up to Puulapi Reservoir during the day where it would be stored and then it would be released overnight to create the hydropower. We've been in negotiations with ADC for many years on this parcel, finding an appropriate piece of land for the solar field adjacent to the Manaw Reservoir. And we finally landed on a site that ADC, you know, feels would have minimal impact to their agricultural needs. It's a site that hasn't been used in many years and it's not optimum for cultivation. So we're kind of getting to the end zone here of realizing that lease with ADC for that parcel of land. And we need to make that happen in order for the project to happen. It just, we just don't feel the project is feasible without that solar field. So it'll also provide a revenue stream to ADC. So we basically proposed an amendment.
Beth, I'm sorry, I've got to cut you off.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Erwin Quinanola from Food Plus Policy Internship at UH West Oahu.
Thanks, Senator, they're not present.
Not present, okay. Anne Frederick from Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Anne Frederick, on behalf of the Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. Hoppa will stand on our testimony in strong support. And we just wanted to highlight a few reasons why we think this measure is important. ADC's vast land holdings are located on the west side of Kauai and the majority of those tenants currently are agrochemical seed companies who have had, you know, residents have, have longstanding concerns with some of the adverse impacts related to the use of restricted-use pesticides adjacent to homes and other sensitive areas. More recently, issues of water hoarding and waste, which led to a contested case at the State Water Commission. And then in 2019, a Clean Water Act violation due to the illegal discharge of pesticides from tenants on ADC land. So we feel that this is an important measure to utilize more of that land for the public good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anne. Next is Clayton Kubo.
Hi, Senator, they're not present.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, members, questions? I'll start off the questioning with, for Jimmy Nakatani. Jimmy, this bill directs ADC to focus on local food production. And as we all know, ADC recently received the results of a very unflattering audit. So my question is, how is ADC going to improve and are you willing to fulfill the mandate in SB 335 if it becomes law?
You know, Senator, for us, the situation right now, I don't see, like I said, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, because our priority is food production. And, you know, I mean, you know, on Oahu, I mean, that's where the, you know, the markets are. I kind of worry about maybe like the neighbor islands where, you know, and, you know, I picked a difference like in Kikaha. There's a lot of land and we have some small farmers there, but, you know, there's also a lot of vacant lands that, you know, out there. And I think that, you know, if hemp takes a, you know, you know, step forward or things like that, you know, I can anticipate, but for us is like, you know, our audit report, I mean, we, on Oahu, we, we put 2,000 acres of, you know, food production, you know, lands into production for food. And that's, you know, it wasn't 25 years, it was from, you know, 2013 to the present. And, you know, Senator, you've been out there, you saw in 2016, we did first planning, it was tough. And then, you know, if you come out and, you know, you're going to be impressed that you're going to see most of that land occupied and planting. And we have both small, medium, and large farmers, you know. So I'm kind of confused about some of the reports that came out. And one of the more interesting reports, I think, is that you hear a report that if you take the time to read that, I mean, they kind of, you know, hit us, you know, all over the place also, but that's a very interesting piece of a report. And it talks about moving agriculture forward. And it's not to say that we're going to neglect small farmers or anything like that, but for us, food production is a priority on Oahu and statewide, but, you know, so I'll leave it at that.
And Jimmy, the question was, if it does pass into law, you will go ahead with the mandate, you'll follow the mandate to fulfill it, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, you know, for reporting, reporting and all that stuff already, I think we've, we've done most of that and we put it online and everything like that so you can, you know, the data is available. If it's not there, we'll soon to put it online, the tenants and what the acreages and everything else like that. I guess my, my only other point maybe, Senator, is that we should try to put some incentives for, for building agriculture, you know. Right now, it's like forcing the lenders to do this, you know, the department as well. And agriculture, as I said, is a business, so it needs to be economically viable. And that's my biggest concern, you know. I mean, it's like, no matter what you do, big, small, seed corn, herbs, whatever, small farmers, if it's not economically viable, then, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to work, you know. So that's, that's my.
All right. Thank you, Jimmy. I see that Clayton Kubo is now with us. Clayton? Mike, please, if you'd like to.
Senator Gabbard, how's it going? Thank you very much for allowing me. Yes, I've been wondering for many, many years now, even talked to the previous Department of Agriculture Chair about when can, you know, a person like me, you know, go to a farm and, you know, order some food? I've been waiting for this and, you know, hey, hopefully you guys are going to make this happen, that more small farmers can be, you know, can, can get an easier way to lease land and succeed versus, you know, the big seed, multi-billion dollar seed companies. Thank you very much for your guys' time and thank you very much for allowing me and hope you guys enjoy the site.
Okay.
And awesome, being on, being on Zoom, you can do this anywhere so long you get phone signal.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going, Senator Nishihara? How you doing?
Thank you very much.
Stay safe, aloha.
All right, mahalo. Members, any other questions?
I have a question, Chair.
Okay.
So would Beth Tokioke.
Okay.
KIUC.
Aloha, Senator.
Aloha. So I know that, and we're very sensitive to the fact that what KIUC is trying to accomplish there with trying to achieve your, your targets for, for energy consumption on the island of Kauai. And you noted in your testimony that you're very close to negotiating with ADC on your particular contract. I'm wondering, let's say perchance that the amendment does not happen, would having a later default date be acceptable to you so that you could finish your negotiation? Because I'm assuming that the reason why you're opposed to this is because the 50% may impact the fact that it's not, your, your project is not necessarily food production. Is that what?
Yes, we, it, our use probably would not be strictly recognized as local food production, but the, so the amendment would basically include uses that support local food production. That was our, that was our thought in proposing the amendment, which, you know, this clearly does. I think, you know, we are very hopeful that the lease negotiations will be concluded with ADC within the next year. We don't really control that timeline, though, so, so it's, you know, you can't necessarily have a date certain when you're dealing with the intricacies. And I know we're finally, we're doing our final due diligence with, with ADC at this time to bring it before their board for conclusion. So I think certainly a longer timeframe to get that done before the bill went into effect would certainly help. But I, I can't say that I know that for certain that we would have it done by whatever date is chosen.
Right now, just so you know, it's January 1, 2022.
Right. Yeah, so that's a relatively short timeframe for these things, although again, we would, we would like to have it concluded. We would definitely like to have it concluded by then because we really are trying to move forward as quickly as we can at this point. So, but, but any, any extension in time, I think would certainly help.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Senator Nishihara.
Yeah, as a follow-up to Senator, Ms. Lucius' question to Ms. Tokioke, what would be a more reasonable timeframe for them to conclude what you're doing?
Um, I guess I could render an opinion, but it might be, Mr. Nakatani might have a better insight into that. I, you know, I would think pushing it out an additional year, I would hope would, you know, certainly, we hope to be in construction in the, on the project by sometime in 2022. So, you know, I think that certainly we'd like our land agreements all settled well before then. But I think it, one more year might be safe, but I can't say for sure because a lot of it depends on when ADC is satisfied, you know, that we're ready to go to the board.
There's a follow-up, Chair. I guess the question might be more relevant to Mr. Nakatani.
Yeah, thank you, Senator. You know, I'm not privy to that. I've been working on the solar thing, that project and everything else like that, but I don't know the answer to that, you know. It's been going, you know, we've been, it kind of changes, you know, the horse was changed in the middle of the stream, you know, we had one deal and then it's another company and everything else like that. So power purchase, it's a bit more complicated than it seems. So the answer is I don't, I'm not, I couldn't tell you the date, you know.
But if the, if this bill is amendment to offer a date, it has to be a date of some kind.
Yeah. Well, I'm more concerned about, you know, the agriculture production. It's not that I ignored the solar project, but, you know, our emphasis is more on food production versus power production, you know, so. And we want, we want to be part of the solution for, you know, KIUC for Kauai and everything else like that. But like I said, you know, there's, you know, and I don't, yeah, but I don't know.
It seems like what this Tokioke is trying to do and, and the benefits, they do come to agriculture as far as reservoirs and, and energy and those things. So it seems like they go kind of hand in glove together at some point.
Right. The, the benefits to the agriculture is that because they have a power purchase agreement and, you know, they'll be part of the system, you know, I, I think they'll be part of the system is that the power they use to, in agriculture for the pumps, et cetera, like that, especially, you know, on, to kind of, you know, take some of the cost away from, from, you know, lessen the cost of production from the area and everything like that. Power production in the Kikaha area has been there for a long time. And then, you know, the other purpose might be to, you, if you don't know that, you know, that, that whole plane is traditionally pumped out, you know, it's a low, it's like a boulder monopoly. And so it's 24, I don't, I don't think it's not 24/7, but it's like maybe eight hours a day pumping water from the, to keep the, the water level low. So, you know, that, that's where some of the money goes for and the power goes to.
Thank you. All right, moving on to SB 934.
Last question, Chair Gabbard.
Sorry, go ahead.
Glenn, for Jimmy Nakatani. The bill says that you manage 22,000 acres of land, but the bill doesn't say what percentage right now, or your testimony doesn't say what percentage right now is being used for agriculture. What is that percentage per acre?
You know, I have a, Senator, I have a, I need to confirm that, but it's like 80% of that should be in agriculture right now. Maybe not all in food production. So if you, you know, the next question is going to be how much is in food production? I don't have that information, but about 80% is in production, you know, so.
When you say production, flowers, hemp, biofuel?
I can, I can give you that information and we'll post it on what, you know, what the production areas are. But I can tell you for Oahu, it's mainly all of food production, like 2,000 acres of food production and everything. It gets little, and I can go to Kikaha and Kauai and then most of that area is cattle. Maybe 1,500 is in, you know, producing timber for biomass. And so Kikaha is a little different on the, on the plains and everything else like that. So, you know, I don't have that information there, you know, for Kikaha and everything. But I would say that 80% of the lands are in, in production. I couldn't give you how much information is in food production. I can tell you what is on Oahu and maybe Kikaha, but I don't have the whole picture.
Oh, well, I mean, you're ADC, I would think you would have that information available. I mean, is it like half of that 80% is in food production or, I can't believe you have, you don't have that statistic.
I can get that for you, Senator, if you, you know, you, I can get that information to you. I mean, it's there, I just don't have it before me.
Okay, this bill is all about ag food production. I can't believe you don't have that in front of you.
Well, you know, I, Senator, I, you know, as I said, you know, it's not going to be a, right now for ADC, it's not going to be a problem for us meeting the 50%. Because whatever we have and whatever we move forward to, you know, we intend to, say like on Oahu, you know, we intend to put maybe 1,000 more acres of agriculture into production. And most of that, you know, food production would be the priority, you know. So whether that be cattle, whether they veg crop, but as, as I said before, whatever you put in needs to be economically viable. So, you know, that's, that's the other part of the whole thing. Yeah. And so for us, I mean, right now, I mean, as the bill right, you know, as the bill's written, it's not going to be an issue for us. I'm just saying that if you look into the future and things change as a crop changes, that's my concern that, you know, you, you don't want to really paint yourself in a corner. And we don't have like, you know, lands on the Big Island or anything like that, but if you go to the Big Island, you know, nursery production is really big. And so, you know, we should, and we should focus on someone, you know, like export. We haven't done that, but it's, you know, I'm convinced that export will make agriculture grow. And I think that's, that's the important ingredient for agriculture to be successful in a way.
Thank you, Mr. Nakatani. We look forward to seeing in the next committee what exactly of that 80% is in food production. Thank you, Chair Gabbard.
Okay, thank you, members. Moving on to SB 934 relating to measurement standards. This exempts hydrogen fuels from petroleum product measurement requirements. And first up, we have Scott Glenn from the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Kirsten Baumgart Turner, Deputy Energy Officer, and I'm here in place of Scott Glenn. We want to provide some testimony that we've also provided written in support of this bill. Chair Gabbard and Wakai and Vice Chairs and members of the committees. The Energy Office supports this because it's a really important element in supporting our 100% renewable energy goals. Hydrogen has a very important role to play in the full portfolio of solutions that it's going to take to get to the 100%. Measures such as this one that remove barriers to the commercial use of hydrogen are supportive of that effort. And it, it helps us to deploy clean energy projects and advance the goals, but it also helps us during this time of economic recovery to create jobs. And so removing the barriers removes the, opens the floodgates for opportunities. So thank you very much for allowing us to testify and we stand ready for questions.
Mahalo, Kirsten. Next is Phyllis Shima Bakuroro from Department of Ag.
Hello, Chair Gabbard. The department will stand on its written testimony supporting the intent and offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Morris. Next is Lauren Zerbal from the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Hi, Senator, they're not present.
Not present. Next is Thor Toma from Service Pacific, Servco Pacific, sorry.
Good afternoon and aloha, Thor Toma from Servco Pacific. We stand on our written testimony of strong support. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That's all the testifiers, members. Are there any questions? I have one for Servco. I have one for Servco. You had mentioned in your testimony, um, that Servco's hydrogen fueling station in Makua Nupuna was the first publicly accessible station in Hawaii. What's the status of the station now and how much is it used?
Yeah, the station is functional and operational right now. We support approximately 25, uh, uh, fuel cell vehicles that residents own, as well as about five or six vehicles that are used for, for company, uh, company use as well. So the 25 vehicles that are out are actually leased by customers and, uh, driven on a daily basis.
Okay. Any other questions, members? Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 1248 relating to agricultural enterprises. It authorizes the Department of Ag to plan, design, construct, operate, manage, maintain, repair, demolish, and remove infrastructure on any lands under the jurisdiction of the department in support, to support and promote agriculture. Establishes the agricultural enterprise program, establishes the agricultural enterprise special fund, and requires the Board of Ag to annually report an accounting of non-ag arclesses to the legislature. Okay, first up is Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Morisata again for the department. The department will stand on its testimony, but which strongly supports this measure. But I just wanted to highlight the fact that, um, the impact of this measure is to, uh, allow the department to be, become more nimble in addressing the, the various needs of the agricultural industry. And it, it gives us that flexibility to be able to interact with, uh, all facets of agriculture and provide support, uh, in all areas that we believe is needed to move it along, uh, for, you know, uh, a greater, um, role in the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Morris. Next is Emmanuel Zibakalam from the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
Hello, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee, Emmanuel Zibakalam here on behalf of the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association. Uh, we'll stand on our written testimony in supporting this measure and answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmanuel. Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau. Brian, are you here?
Thank, thank you, sir. My apologies, we're monitoring the House bill for this exact measure in CTC, so we're testifying on both. Um, uh, good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Nishihara, and some of the members of the committee. Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in strong support of this measure.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Scott Enright from Waimea Water Services.
Hi, Senator, they're not present.
Okay, and that's it on the testifiers. Uh, any questions, members? Okay, oh, is that a hand up, Senator Rhodes? Oh, okay, I see a little hand there. Weird. Okay, uh, Senator Wakai, I'll turn it back over to you if you want to, uh, as far as decision making and...
Okay, members, we're going to take a brief process to the small room for discussion. Well, thank you for your patience. Uh, we are reconvening our Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism and our friends from the Committee on Agriculture and Environment for decision-making on our three o'clock agenda. The first item on this agenda is Senate Bill 167 relating to the state plan. We heard testimony from a variety of individuals, all in support. Um, we think that this is a really good step forward for Hawaii's efforts to combat greenhouse gases. So the chairs, chairs have conferred and the recommendation is to pass SB 167 as is. Members, any questions? If not, Senator, Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism, as regards to SB 167, Chair recommends pass as is. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair Ms. Lucha votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, uh, for AEN, same recommendation, uh, any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Acasio? Sorry, can't hear you?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Thank you, members, measure passes. And then moving on to the 305 agenda, uh, joint with our good friends at EET, uh, SB 335 relating to ag and the ADC. Uh, as we all know, uh, ADC was the focus of a harsh audit and this chair hopes that ADC takes the criticism to heart and resolves to do a better job. And so the, this bill seeks to get the ADC in folk to focus more on local food production. So chairs, I've con- uh, we've conferred and the recommendation would be to pass SB 335 with amendments uh, based on KIUC's testimony that the language in this bill would halt plans for the West Kauai Energy, which would be the world's first solar and pumped storage hydro facility. Will make a change on page seven, lines 13 to 18 to read, uh, C, beginning January 1st, 2022. The Department of Agriculture and Corporation shall annually lease or license at least 50% of land eligible for lease or license, or lease or license renewal to agricultural operations whose primary business is food or crop production for local consumption or for purposes that support food or crop production for local consumption. And then the, uh, for the Center for Food Safety, their testimony, we're going to include their suggestions to make it so that two members of the ADC board should be representatives of local farmers or ranchers association as nominated by the chairs of the House and Senate Ag Committees and will reduce the number of at-large members from four to two. Also from, um, CFS will require the ADC board meetings to be subject to the requirements and procedures that are set forth in Chapter 92, Part 1, the Sunshine Law. And there's also tech amendments. Any discussion? Seeing none, the Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Thank you, members.
Members of EET, same recommendation to pass this measure with the stated amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism, as regards to Senate Bill 335, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to SB 934 relating to measurement standards dealing with hydrogen fuel. Chairs having conferred, the recommendation would be to pass SB 934 as is. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take the vote. The Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara?
Aye.
Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Thank you, members, the measure passes.
Members of EET, same recommendation on Senate Bill 934 to pass as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism on SB 934, Chair recommends pass as is. Are there any reservations? Any nays? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. And then moving on to the final measure on the 305 agenda, uh, SB 1248 relating to agricultural enterprises. Excuse me. Chair's recommendation will be, um, as Department of Ag states in its testimony, uh, the department needs flexibility in its disposition of public lands to support those changing conditions by allowing and encouraging the use of innovative agricultural models to optimize productivity, supporting and promoting agriculture through farmers' markets, food hubs, and processing facilities, animal feed mills, et cetera, and enabling or providing agricultural educate, educational training. So having conferred, the chairs, uh, would like to recommend to pass SB 1248 as is. Any discussion? Seeing none, the Chair votes aye. Senator, Vice Chair? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Aye. Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Thank you, members, the measure passes.
Members of EET, same recommendation to pass SB 1248 as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
For Senate Bill 1248, Chair recommends pass unamended. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Okay, I think that's it, Chair. Aloha, everyone, have a wonderful, long weekend.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, everyone. Aloha.
Aloha.
Thank you for your patience. We would like to convene the Joint Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism and our friends from the Labor, Culture, and Arts Committee for the 310 agenda. We are kind of on time, at least we got the date right, February 12th, uh, Friday. We have one measure on this agenda, Senate Bill 1023 relating to taxation. On our testifiers list, we have Kirk Cottrell from DLR.
Good morning, um, sorry, good afternoon, Chairs Wakai, uh, Chair Tanaguchi. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, Kirk Cottrell, Administrator Division of State Parks. We stand in, in strong support of, of this measure. Any support that can be provided toward one of our most, you know, iconic, um, state park buildings that has such significant value for our host culture is, is greatly appreciated. Within the context that we are complete understanding of the, the current, uh, condition of the TAT and its, its uncertainty and the fact that it will remain uncertain for a, a certain period of time, uh, without understanding if there's any way to enable this legislation with the understanding that at some point in the future, if, if and when we reboot the visitor industry, that some consideration would be to, to channel some of the TT toward, uh, Iolani Palace. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Kirk. Alan Carpenter from DLR?
Same testimony.
Oh, okay, Kirk and Alan, all in one. Melanie Ide from the Bishop Museum.
Good afternoon, Senator and members of the committee. Thank you very much for hearing this bill. Um, I'm President and CEO of Bishop Museum and I'm also here to stand on, um, strong support on our written testimony and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Kaiwi Yun from Bishop Museum.
Vice President of Operations Planning and Program Management. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Yun. Paula O'Connor from Iolani Palace.
Hi, aloha. I stand on our testimony, um, you know, we, as all of our museums and cultural places here in Hawaii knows, we've all struggled with COVID and, um, this, this would help us immensely in, as we continue to preserve and protect Iolani Palace. Um, so I stand by my testimony and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Paula. Uh, Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation.
Uh, thank you, Chair and Senators. Tom Yamachika from the Tax Foundation. Uh, we have submitted brief written testimony, uh, basically with, and with all respect to our, uh, cultural museums, Bishop Museum, Iolani Palace. Uh, we don't think that an earmark off the transient accommodations tax, or any tax for that matter, uh, is an appropriate way of funding anything. It does decrease transparency and accountability, uh, and we think it should be budgeted for like any other expense in the state budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you very much, Tom. And we have all supportive testimony from the following. Mark Kalahelle from the Friends of Iolani Palace, Kirsten Faulkner from Historic Hawaii Foundation, Terry Skillman from the Hawaii Arts Alliance, Pono Shim from Oahu Economic Development, and a board member of Iolani Palace, Richard Kennedy, Cheryl B., Deborah Ward, Kiko Kulehiva, Brian K. Aloha, and Mark Shakoff. All of those individuals just mentioned has submitted testimony and support. Members, any questions for those who are online? No? Uh, no, I got the information from the folks. Okay, uh, stand by, everyone, we're going to go into the little room for decision.
Research room is opening up.
Thank you for your patience. So we're reconvening our Committee on Economic Development, uh, Energy Economic Development, Tourism, and our good friends from the Labor and Culture and Arts Committee. Just like that, voila, senators grew like mushrooms in this room. We're all, we're all here and present, uh, here to discuss Senate Bill 1023 regarding taxation. It's a bill to help Iolani Palace and Bishop Museum by dedicating some of the TAT funds, uh, to their good work. Uh, the two chairs have conferred and, you know, based on Iolani Palace's, um, a deficit of $60,000 a, a month, just going to multiply that out, uh, 12 times and go to actually have a fixed amount instead of the percentages outlined in the bill. That fixed amount for Iolani Palace will be $750,000. And based on, uh, Bishop Museum having twice as many visitors as Iolani Palace, we'll put in a figure of $1.5 million to assist, uh, Bishop Museum, uh, through these, uh, funds from, from TAT. So those are the recommendations for the amendments to, to the bill. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism, as it relates to Senate Bill 1023, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair Ms. Lucha votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Your recommendations adopted, Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, same recommendation for the Committee on, uh, Labor and Culture and the Arts.
Yeah, I'll be calling for the vote for, um, the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 1023 with amendments. Chair Tanaguchi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ihar votes aye. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Keo Ho Kaloli is excused. Senator Favella?
Aye.
The recommendations adopted.
Great, thank you very much, Senators. Good journey.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, we're convening the Committee on Transportation and Committee on Energy and Economic Development and Tourism on our 3:30 PM agenda. I'll note, we do have three bills, we do have a limited, very limited amount of time. Uh, I'll note from the beginning, it is the Chair's intent to defer the first measure on the agenda, SB 774, as we have a substantially similar measure on a separate committee. Moving, um, the other two measures, we do have written testimony on. For those folks who would like to testify, um, I'd encourage you, please, to summarize. Uh, if not, stand on your testimony to be very helpful, uh, as we do have the written testimony covered here. That said, uh, we will also be cutting people off after two minutes to make sure everyone has time to speak. So up first is SB 920 relating to state light duty vehicles. This establishes a clean ground transportation goal for state agents.
establishes a clean ground transportation goal for state agencies converting to zero-emissions vehicles by December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty, and testifying first, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, SB seven-seven-four. You do have to go through this, I suppose. Relating transportation provides tax credit for installation, electric vehicle charging infrastructure. I'll note Chair's intent to defer this measure. So we do have testimony from Department of Taxation with comments.
We'll stand on our written testimony, Chairs. Thank you.
Tax Foundation? We have comments? Mission Zero Hawaii? In support. Avis Budget Group in opposition. Hawaii EV in support. Hawaii EV Association-
And on our testimony.
Thank you. Ulupono Initiative in support. Niop in support. Blue Planet Foundation in support.
We'll stand our testimony, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii State Energy Office?
Stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Enterprise Holdings?
We'll stand on our testimony in opposition, Chair.
Thank you. We also have additional testimony from five individuals all in support. That said, we'll move on unless anyone has any question. That said, we'll move on to the next measure, SB nine-twenty relating state light-duty vehicles, which establishes green, clean ground transportation goals for state agencies of December thirty-one, two thousand and thirty. Testifying first on this measure is the State Procurement Office. We have comments. Department of Planning and General Services?
Hi, Senators. They're not present.
Thank you. In support, Department of Transportation? In support. Three-fifty Hawaiian support. Mission Zero Hawaii in support. Hawaii EV in support. Hawaii EV Association in support. Ulupono Initiative?
Good afternoon, Chairs. Ulupono will stand on its testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric?
Hawaiian Electric stands on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office?
Hawaii State Energy Office stands on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Blue Planet Foundation?
Thank you, Chair. Blue Planet Foundation is in support of this measure. We do offer an amendment hoping to expand this to all private vehicles, similar to what California has done by executive order by two thousand and thirty-five. We don't think it's enough, although it's a great start to focus on state fleets, but we really need a clear deadline for gas-powered vehicles statewide. Thanks for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Alliance for Automotive Innovation in support, and additional four individuals all in support. And just to be clear, because I don't want anyone to be skipped, did we miss anybody who is online with us on nine-twenty? If not, thank you. Are there any questions? If not, I think you. Moving on to the last bill on the agenda, SB nine-eight-seven relating to greenhouse gas emissions, convenes a sustainable aviation fuel task force within the State Energy Office to develop plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Testifying first is the Office of Planning. Good afternoon.
Aloha, Friday, Senators. The Office of Planning offers comments and five amendments to the proposed bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the State Energy Office.
Aloha, Senators. Aloha, Senators. We appreciate the opportunity to provide comments on this bill. While the intent of it is really excellent, there is work that is being done by the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute through funding from the FAA for aviation fuels R and D. And this task force would add a considerable amount of work to the Energy Office for which we don't currently have the resources to support. So that is of concern of us, particularly under the current economic situation and the hiring freeze. So mahalo for the opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you. Up next, we have Americans for Democratic Action in support. Immole Alliance in support. Hawaii, or three-fifty Hawaiian support, and additional comment or additional support from two individuals. That is all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, thank you very much, everyone. So again, my apologies for the tight timeframe. There'll be plenty more opportunities for robust discussion as things continue, but this time, why don't we recess and take us into the decision-making little room?
One?
Okay, good afternoon. We're reconvening the Joint Committees on Transportation, on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism for decision-making on our three-thirty PM agenda. We have three bills on the agenda. Up first is SB seven-seven-four relating to transportation, which provides a tax credit for the installation of EV infrastructure for rental cars and makes the transition. And I really want to thank all the testifiers for participating in this one. I'll just note that we did hear a substantially similar in intent bill just the other day, and have that up for decision-making coming up. And we want to carry on the conversation in that bill. So for the time being, we'll be deferring this measure. Moving on to SB nine-twenty relating to state light-duty vehicles. This establishes clean ground transportation goals for state agencies to achieve hundred percent light-duty motor vehicles in a hundred percent zero-emission fleet by two thousand and thirty. Appreciate the work that the committees have put into this one. We'd like to move it forward. Chairs having conferred, making a couple amendments that are technical in nature and non-substantive. And this would move on to the Ways and Means Committee for further discussion. So any comments or questions on this?
Is this the amendment that was recommend, there was an amendment recommended by, was that procurement? Is that under consideration?
Yeah, we looked at that, but did not adopt that because that sort of defeats the whole purpose of the the bill.
They took out the date, right?
Yeah, they took out all, basically all the substantive stuff.
No, not really. They're just a dating, the date paragraph.
But the date is important. That's the goal. We take out the goal, then let's have the job.
Okay, so recommend, recommendation to pass with amendments.
Okay. For the Committee on Transportation, the Chair's recommendation is to pass SB nine-twenty with amendments. Chair Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator English? I believe he's in, on flight. Senator Shima Bukurro?
Excused.
Excused. And Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
For members of EET, same recommendation to pass this measure with technical amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
Senate Bill nine-two-zero, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Ms. Lucha votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Rivier?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to the final measure, SB nine-eight-seven relating to greenhouse gas emissions, which convenes a sustainable aviation fuel task force in the Energy Office. We'd like to move this forward, but making some amendments. First of all, because the Energy Office does have a lot on its plate, according to their testimony, we would like to look to the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute as the convener for this discussion, but still maintain the Energy Office as a member. So if they want to participate, they're they're able to. Secondly, we just want to really clean the thing up and consolidate. So we'll make it a very simple clean aviation task force, looking at, you know, future electric and zero-emissions air travel and cleaner fuels along the way. In the meantime, reporting back to the legislature on recommendations and progress. Secondly, with the membership, we want to note that federal agencies, we cannot compel to show up. So rather than that, we'll invite them along with the other stakeholders and add in, to be sure, the provision that the task force itself can invite whomever else they feel is appropriate as necessary. And then tech amendments.
Okay. Chair's recommendation on SB nine-eight-seven is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator English and Senator Shima Bukurro excused. Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
For members of EET, same recommendation to pass this measure with amendments. Any discussion? Seeing and heard that Chair, excuse me, Senator Ms. Lucha, I vote yes.
Senate Bill nine-eight-seven for Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Ms. Lucha votes aye. Senator Lee?
Aye.
Senator Rivier?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measures adopted, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and due diligence. Thanks to the Good Committee on EET for for everything. We are adjourned.